Next, for our business, request of removal special condition. Place the cross state license number 2004-33-147-007. City license number 210. Issue to allow the airport to operate. Charity has blue sky on the Russian. Located at 1204 East Ranch Street, Elizabeth. Business to close down, one hour later every night. Three month probation until the end of the 7th, 2011. And should may take fifteen to get on premises. Effective October 24, 2011. Licensing holders requesting to leave restrictions placed on this license. Core construction, Core Delway number 1025, Prosper Street, Little Side. President of eighty percent of business, owned and eight shares. Yanet, North Office, 734 Cleveland Avenue, London, Jersey. Secretary for twenty percent of business, owned and two shares. Any comments?
Counselor, do you think surgery or less than we have?
If you can hear us.
That's amazing. You could pull the mic off of the stand. Surgery or less than we have? We have all been there.
The time here has lasted. As it was almost October 24, 2011. They have enough of the incidents to be already conservative, their counsel. And that's such a may have a big formally request. And restrictions will be lifted out of service basis.
Alright, our ABC attorney, did you have any share with this?
Yes, sir, Detective Paul Pazzanella, ABC, Police Department. Yep, as a question by the city council, I ran a check or list. Well, cat, just a search for incidents which occurred between the days of October 1st, 2011, and December 31st, 2011, in regards to the Blue Sky Bar. What I recovered was 123456 incidents which were reported several, actually took, they all were expressed. By that I mean, October 8th, it was reported the search approved, police responded. October 9th, it was reported the assault, a person actually got injured with a broken ear ball. On October 16th, there was a fight, probably four males that were hiding in a house cave. According to the patrol unit that responded. On October 27th, closing time, call of a large group at Blue Sky. On November 6th, reported a fight. And on November 9th, reported a fight.
Is that enough, attorney?
Yeah, that is a search that, in the computer system of the police department. Every incident that is reported, or police respond, you're both concerned. That's both of service, and there were several of these type of reports that go with it. And by that I mean, a handwritten or typed report by the police officers about these incidents which I stated.
Thank you, attorney. Are there any comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yeah, comments before we proceed?
Yes, sir. Was anyone arrested during his time?
Uh, they can tell. I don't think anyone was arrested during these, arrested also. So I would have to ask on the same note, in regards to the report of the assault, which would, I would think, lead to an investigation, no one was arrested for that as well.
Counselor, I have a question for the attorney. All of these incidents, initially were initiated as a result of action, action in the bar. In other words, these all directly related to agents in the bar?
Yes, sir. I mean, running this, there's several ways to run it, which is a search for incidents. This is a search of the, search for incidents which occurred at that address, which is both for East Ranch Street, which are these are incidents that occurred.
Thank you. Counselor, has there been any other incidents from November 9th to October 11th?
None according to the computer system.
Now, there's basically two months without seeing the business.
Detective, did you miss that the incidents last of December 24th?
The search, I mean, was October 1st through the September 1st.
December 1st, and today is January 23rd?
Yes, sir.
Chairman?
Yes, Counselor. Detective, do you know exactly the time that all those incidents come out on a report?
Yes, I know the reason why, ladies and gentlemen, what the times are. On the first one I stated, which was this early, which is October 8th, 3:31 in the morning. On October 9th, the time when they reported the assault, had occurred at 1:00 a.m. On October 16th, the time of the incident was 2:31 a.m. On October 27th, the large crowd that occurred at 1:42 a.m. On November 6th, the fight that occurred at 12:53 a.m. And on 9th, reported the fight, that all the search came in at 3:00 a.m.
Okay, and thank you very much, Paul, I really appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, I spent some time looking at this premises. Most of the time that the detectives testified at night, clearly stated, except the establishment being closed down. Paul, you know there's another body, but I don't want to mention a name. But I've been on three of my stalkers, embarrassing our police department, right there, right, the police department. There's always people loitering, bringing beers outside, I didn't resist to be there, any particular police officer. So, the bar, new bar, here, meanwhile, they're coming out of the bar, new bar, and they're not the whole for grocery, they're making the nuisance in front of us. Paul, you know that this establishment, it closes one hour earlier than all the hours they live. Does not meet the criteria of this board that we actually, at ten point, one hour earlier. If you say school fight, this establishment closes at 1:00, this closes at 1:00, that closes at 12:00. And if it's a three, they have to close at 2:00. If it's a five, they have to close at 4:00. So, there's only one incident that I have seen, that was 12:57, which was within the limit. So, I have a really see, because I was witness myself, I went there nights after nights, with a friend of mine, which I will address. Mr. Chairman, and, you know, under a certain, there's a couple bars. And apparently, some of those bars, they don't even have the right, you know, license to do certain things. They stop leaving people from others, okay? And then, there's a lot of use YouTube. But yeah, it's right across the police department, that always tracks for the police department right there. And yeah, not even one person that comes out of the police department, actually still aware of this, any of those things. And I actually, during my vacation, I spent most of my vacation, two, three, two hours a night, three hours a day, to see some of the best part I have in my world. By next moment, I'm full of the information of this to pass tonight, so we can start some people, man. And, Mr. Chairman, I don't know what's happening in this area. But if you all got a name on Blue Sky, Blue Sky is being hosted everywhere. And sometimes, there's a fight aside, and the police department, and the local municipal department, Blue Sky is playing. Is that fair? Is that what, faith, freedom, honor, God, in God who shows, who stands for here tonight, and any other night, in the American City Council? Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hear right now.
Is that a question?
Yes, I'd just like to clarify, what I was saying before, in response to this announcement. I just want to make sure it's clear, that is, that the message true here. On the October date, which was the assault, the report was made at 3:32, I heard the incident, according to the person who made the report. It occurred at 1:00 a.m. And according to what you're saying, the victim states that while on Blue Sky Night Club, suspect went on with a problem with a bull garrison, bench, right side, with a broken ear ball. That's, that's one flaw. Then there is the reported fight, which occurred on the 9th, that occurred at 1:30, 1:29, I'm sorry. Reporting date is 2:31. So, I have misstated that as according to the times, as I had the control unit. Okay, so, we're talking 1:29, second, 1:00 in the morning, first one. On the 16th, the incident that occurred on the 16th, this was, the notes from the police officers was, at 1:21, move crowd from the Blue Sky Bar, 12:40, Ranch Street. Then there was the one that we had mentioned, which happened at 12:53. There was, if you agree that there was an incident which occurred on the, November 6th, that's 2:39, at the closing time. Just that there was a party surprise, so that could be coming from a different establishment. I just want to clarify with ones that I had mentioned. Here's, oh, here's one, 9, I'm sorry, this 2309, which would be at 11:09 p.m. That was reported fight at Blue Sky, 12:40, Ranch Street. Just want to clarify that.
Mr. Chairman, Paul, nothing against you, your job as a detective, I respect your job, and I respect what you do for us, you know. I really appreciate that the world council, any establishment I work with, does not behave with all the rights of, you know, to whatever, and our duty of, I really appreciate doing your job. Just, and all of us, I have fifty seven bars on my board, and this establishment bars, otherwise the city might come up with over three hundred bars. That this is the only establishment in the city that creates problems.
Detective, once again, the base that you provided, how many of those were after October 24th, the 6th?
After, I'm sorry, October 24th. After October 24th, yes, that seems to be three, on the way back from October 24th. There's three. November 27th, November 6th, November 9th.
And you're saying that of those three incidents, they did occur the closing hours, not after the closing hours?
Yeah, I'm gonna go back again, make sure it's like that. November 9th, that occurred at 11:09 p.m. That was reported fight, sending to Blue Sky, 12:40, Ranch Street. Going backwards, page two, that's. November 6th, just, that doesn't really mention the Blue Sky, mentions the address. So, I guess we don't want to go here. October 27th was a crowd coming from Blue Sky Night Club, and that was at 1:00 a.m. on that day. So, answering question for this person two, two and three, it's just two, because that.
Okay, Congressman, so that, by, 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 to establish, uh, these six, I can mention all of them?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have met with the right here from the police department, I should scan sheet, the reports, the minutes, and the time, and the reports of the people. I have a lot of respect for Paul Pazzanella, you know, many years, trust me, one of the police officers. And no doubt that I recognize, even us, we have listeners in hand, and then we have judge accordingly. So, but, my defense is, this is not the only establishment in a hundred fifty to the left, a hundred fifty to the right. And nearby the train station, nearby where I, having had my stay off the train station, or from any other liberal establishment on Wall Street, or whatever. And whatever you see, come to visit us, I, you know, we like to be together with our friends, and of course, for the extra money. Thank God, there's a residential, non-hotel residential area, or the business area, but you know, we should respect our police department. They don't, they are not, and I'm sure there's other regular cars coming out, and these people, I saw people with bars outside, coming from this premises, near the city, rather than police department. And I'm sure the way I saw, remember the ABC, as the town from the ward, they were also waiting for, they came out from there in and out, they brought us, or something, I saw, unless, I must have visual. Google, who passes a night, I have seen, and other people if they want to see, so, there's not many issues. Okay, it's not a long issue, I don't care. And this will take a lot of education, and it may do a bit, and if I remember this, the line of order, we'll say last time. You know, I understand they were saying that, you know, it was not right, and then all of a sudden, you know, it was a traffic, October 1st, or whatever, not lying, which, you know. And, and, and the, what's the name, the owner, or the chair, the two, two shares, and the owner, Mr. Joe Donbetta, has eighty percent of the share, you know. I know they're trying to comply with all the training that has security, checking, people's safety. And with the stability, the family, that we have right now, Mr. President, all those bars, that are meant to have a problem. They ain't gonna sign, you know, security tells them that, oh, wait, if they're, ooh, that's what, that's what our police department has to command and do to the jobs. Sir, really wrong, he's gone and gone, back to the town. What's that?
Okay, Congressman.
Counselor, Mr. President?
Yes.
I just want to try to get a point of clarification, just to move me through the request. I'm just trying to get a point of clarification here, because it says that three month probation until the end of October 1st, December 2011, it should maintain security, and purpose is defended by October 24th, 2011. Now, three month probation, when did it begin, Mr. President? October 24th, so, they still on probation, because today is January 23rd, so, to be correct, the probation period is not over, because they were saying it's October 24th, then you have November 24th, December 24th, and January 24th. That has three months to be, and in the, in the request, it says until the end of December 20th. December 21st, which only gives you two months. So, right there is some conflicting request that remain, it just doesn't make sense, because it's not, it's not a legal period. If it was effective by October 24th, and it reads that it ends on December 2011, which only makes you two months, probation period. He had, as in May, the police department just prepared for us, six incidents between October and November 9th. Six incidents, whether it actually took place, or if it was around him, but it hasn't been charged to this location, six incidents. And just, October to November 9th. Now, I'm assuming, maybe they just took a break for the holidays, because the holidays were Thanksgiving to the New Year. Who knows? But I don't know what we're trying to do here, at this point in time. I hear my father, to my good right, being, who's saying, defending, defending, I don't know what is being defended. Because this establishment, they may have some issues, whether it's directed, because of that establishment, or because of something in the area. But prior to tonight's meeting, this board, in my absence, took it upon itself to put a restriction on it, in terms of having the business to close one hour earlier, every night. In addition to that, it should maintain some type of security on premises. Now, my question is, if, if security was asked to be on premises, what happened? Why did those six incidents occur, if there was security on premises, especially in the November months? Because as of October 24th, this restriction came into place. So, there's a whole lot of stuff going on here, that gets conflicting, and leads a lot to be questioned. So, I just tried to get some clarification. Mr. Secretary, is it in fact that it was a three month period, and then it did start on October 24th, and they shouldn't be before us tonight? Because the three month period is not over, actually, it will be over on tomorrow, which is January 24th? Or is it, was it just a two month period, or was it just until just the end of December? If we say it's just the end of December, and it wasn't a three month period, it is starting on October 24th? So, I'm just trying to get some clarification, because that wasn't at the prior meaning. So, if you can't read this reading, it would be totally conflicted to, to the facts. Thank you.
Mr. President, when the restriction was given by our Councilman Masa, he mentioned, I would like to get the three month probation for the day of September.
Three month probation, okay, three month probation, or until the end of December, whichever comes first?
Do you mind that?
Okay, because that's not.
I have to be, back to question, back to my question.
No, because that just.
Constable, please, please, please.
Yeah, no, you cannot, because it's.
Right.
I'm only asking, we're not to clarify, because this one is a matter of record, and it's something that we, we say over here too. Right, which is a three month probation. Right, so basically, yeah, the record is not true.
May I, Counselor?
And now, it's up to, it's up to basically, the chair.
I understand.
And, and, I'm not a part of the give the record, because the record has now been changed to, it is a record, and it's, it's not clear.
Mr. President, I don't know.
Yes, Mr. President.
Counselor, I just, just to leave the record, that the council agent, she interpreted her own way. Security had been effective in the end of October. This case came out on August, August was over to September, towards the end of September, towards the end of September, the year this case, and which all the charges came by, so I'm, okay? And at the time, I went along with the recommendation from our police department, and we said, well, you have to have a security effective, whatever date is on the record, we're here now, on the 24th, if I'm mistaken. And you will be closing it one hour earlier until the end of December, that would make it three months. Because some of the, even in the month of January, was set at the end of the month. This applicant, who already could have life, an additional twenty four days. It would be necessary, Mr. Chairman, bad, so offensive, because, you know, okay. They would come up, and we are in the City Council, to be open during the holiday, and they forced, during the months, that business is there. So, I was probably supporting the tactical, I was recommending, I made sure that you get a security, our security is going to be sure, and peace, generally, and of fights will take place inside. If people is more around, and fighting in the police department, the applicant personally has no fault whatsoever. Meanwhile, moving away from this establishment, this people drawn, nuisance, uniting, and moving toward this establishment, where is the purpose of dealing with this applicant, purchase, all the identification needed by every? Or coming from the train station, drawn from New York, or drawn from New York, influence, and when this is a nice chick hanging around the side, oh, I don't like this, go over here. You know what? They gotta take advantage, gonna happen all over the parts, whether it's a residential, or promotional area. This is by, by, what's happening in this, just from now on, I'm gonna have a boundary, whether it's in my sixth ward, or it's a second sixth ward.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Are there any comments, or any comments? What is your thought?
I, I don't know what to listen. Counselor, what do you want to do with this?
Me?
Yeah, you're welcome.
See, they're lost, Counselor, see what I want to do.
You're welcome. I understand this, my.
What do you want to do?
The ladies asked me to do this, now we have additional confusion, so, allocation against this association.
Additional, what do you want to do?
Well, firstly, if I listen to hours, to three, five, any other bars, and if they have a serious charge, and the detective asked tonight, the right to bring charges against them, we'd like to hear them next time, and if it's not, it will be a record, and any other violation would definitely have to shut down the space, or whatever, among the things. But, you know, I usually get those charges tonight, laundry list from the month of October, if you ever saw those charges by Detective Oliver, if you're limited to be this guy. That's tonight, I asked that question, and I had a problem with this bar, he came out with five six, nuisance in the bar. Some of those, the news, probably, even this morning, the applicant, what I have to say, relating to some of those judges before my recommendation. And then, the other, Counselor, I'd like to ask a question. All of us, about, by this, can we?
Okay, Counselor, thank you. Can I have a question? What do you want to say?
I want to hear the testimony, I want, I want the applicant to defend herself. If they do the right thing, if they do the wrong thing, then, oh, wow, we have to punish them. I made to represent, I want to support the law, Mr. President, I have no favoritism, I have no right, I work for this association, I have no vote as a local girl, or a local boy, whatever. So, whatever we have to apply, we have to apply.
Okay, Counselor, do you like hearing my system?
Absolutely, do you like to hear that?
The example that you like to provide to us tonight, is before the 24th, that why you decide that we have to close one hour early? There is two reports that there, after October 24th, that was the minute we get it closed one hour early, he mentioned two. One of the days, one of the days that he mentioned, that is after one, we closed 12:30, when everyone closed at 2:00. The people has to be up one thing, we closed at 12:30. So, if you remind the time there, so, even one of those, was a thing in my world. And I really expect, there were the two, for us, and I wanted to for us, because we have to have a system, but we have to protect the community too. And if they said that, I mentioned this, I would like to ask, who I, I never get any police officer, if I don't get, to share anything. We can say, I can, I can complete your report, so, no, it takes every night, I want, make the report for you. Why did they never pass by to share? So, I would like to see the reports, and I want to see if they have windows, and if that was there in the accident, the report. Because even though they said somebody there before October 24th, they hid in the bar, or somewhere, they fully comment that is a report, they like, and they said, the police didn't see any sign of a bar, or the way that the person that was in the police department. So, that number, I don't know.
I, I have a question, Counselor, what happened to that, it says on November 6th, November 9th?
I don't quite remember time, or that.
Oh, November 6th, it says 12:53, and November 9th is at 11:09, what happened?
I can't remember, it's on November 6th and November 9th. He's giving something to Wednesday, and he goes to the state.
I don't know. What they said, Detective?
We said.
November 6th and November 9th.
Number 6th was a Sunday, and November 9th is a Wednesday.
Which goes, Wednesday, and it's Sunday, and Wednesday, whatever.
November 6th, at 12:03, was a Sunday.
So, we go to the state.
But on Saturday, they're timing it.
On Saturday, one day.
So, this happened on Saturday, Saturday night? Were you not there?
No, that's why, if, 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 of course, inside the place, or that, if you are inside the place, then why not to sit there for?
Were you there on the 5th, Saturday night?
No, I am there on the Sunday night.
Detective, this happened inside the place? Detective, is this incident happened inside the place on November 5th, leading into November 6th?
Again, I know I've, I've read, I was not seen, I know I've got on reading from the computer, and the reports are generated by, oh, it's for some. November 6th, you guys have found that?
It was November 5th into the 6th, so it was Saturday night into Sunday.
Yeah, because according to the reports here, it was November 6th, 2011, at 12:53 a.m.
Right, so what?
Oh, I'm sorry, it was a reported fight, was responded, and then they, apparently broke up the fight.
Was it inside?
Was it inside? Is that inside?
This report doesn't say that, I'm assuming, and I shouldn't assume, but I would think that there would be a handwritten or typed report, if it was something further than that, it looks like there was something that's handwritten or, and this is the report that they did. is the report that they did.
On November 9th?
On November 9th. On November 9th, at 11:09, this is a handwritten report, police officers responded, it was saying several people have witnesses. It's handwritten, I'm writing it down, so, take your time. This was a report that was taken, that it looks like to me that it occurred inside the bar, and the victim made a report outside the bar.
So, it was an inside bar, it's not from the?
Oh, she is.
Um, it's a reported fight, apparently there's several witnesses, and there's several people that were in, said people were involved in the fight, and the victim.
Have there been any charges filed as a result of these charges?
No, that's my, um.
The reason why?
I don't know, I wasn't, it's not my investigation, I can find out further.
Oh, we're gonna charge this to the ABCs?
Oh, no, no, sorry.
Mr. President?
Yes, Congressman?
Mr. President, it's usually some confusion as to how he's, exactly, what he places certain dates, and also, I had a link to the counsel woman, the way perhaps it was written, also supposed to be more confusion, the three months, I'm kind of confused myself. The basic investigation that I've heard, I'm gonna make a motion to move the application forward. To move this person?
Yes.
Is there, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a second, on a condition that the applicant realizes, that the next time he gets charged, she's a victim, or they are, I don't know who's, my, the jar going, but, obviously, there's a constant issue at this place. Okay? So, man, if you cut, you want to help there, the higher the being, because they aren't going to do harm, and protect your business without any kind of, so my suggestion to you is, going forward, you do what you gotta to do to protect your business, to prevent your license. Next time you visit the city, Councilman Massa, as he indicated, we will be supporting the suspension of this license. Please be on notice, it's all in the statement, okay? I'll second that, I can mention.
Mr. President, I'm, I'm, yeah. I'm gonna excuse myself for going on this application, number one, for walking, and grievances that exist in the right of secondly, because there is some problems there, or we can leave in that area, and I don't want to wait till someone get killed before this board to take, you know, the corrective action that we really need to take. The police department, they say that there were number incidents, some inside, some outside, and I don't know what we're waiting for to happen, but me personally, I cannot give a hold on this application, based on what I heard from our police department, what was written, and even one of the, um, part of the process, that stuff is happening, stuff is happening there, and I don't think I'm going to wait until someone get killed as a result of something that happens inside of that application. So, I will be excused myself, because I was lying on you, when this incident first brought uh, to this board. Thank you, Mr. President.
Congressman, Congressman, Reddy, Reddy. Detective, in the future, if it's used to match, uh, rising issue of charge of illegal wire, I think I'm hearing from Congressman Reddy, rather than sort of dealing with these incidents by a strict basis, it's cleaner than to do on a retrograde basis. So, if these incidents were at level retrograde, should be brought, hopefully in the future, they will be brought in the next, and the other thing is, in terms of the recording, if there can be more clarity in the future, in terms of whether these incidents occurred inside the premises or outside the premises, that would help alleviate some of the confusion here, because that's the condition, my first question is to you tonight, does, did these incidents happen inside or outside, so on going forward basis, more clarity, if the person was placed inside or outside, we don't think there are any of those. Congressman, what?
Uh, Mr. President, we did the right thing, we delivered the restriction to this premises, and also, I do agree with the first word, Councilman, that the establishment should be more thorough, and she does, or she, what he does, Mr. Almeida. There were establishments that had a head of weapons, and everything else that stays at the back of the stadium, because the city council felt the trouble of looking at them. And here we are, in less than 150 feet in both directions from this establishment, there are establishments which they create, or they go to the train station, and they can't parade, whatever, you might see a beautiful lady outside the bar, or ready to go out to the bar, I think with, with this, and almost the language, we'll be able to look at all establishments, and the same, somebody used to be a little tele school, or micro school, like, you're looking at this place. And, Mr. President, I have a lot of confidence in you, and the rest of the police department to do a good job, I agree, you're gonna be equally in the same vein, I mean, by this, but if you're out for a truck, because I have no interest in public business. Thank you, so I go along with the councilman's recommendation to lift, and of course, the step, first word, I'm making a motion to second.
Mr. President, if you can, more comments? Sure, Congressman, my concern, and the councilman is that no charges should be brought, and unfortunately, less charges should be brought, I think, I think in the future, I know Detective Massa has just taken over, if a business is put on probation, here's that is a really strong observation, T's crossed, I dotted, so that when and if the applicant comes in to lift their probation, we know exactly what's been happening there for the last few months. And if there were charges, there were violations, and charges should have been brought, to bring them up, and you know what, that makes our life a lot easier on, 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 just, I think that's important, going forward, obviously, this applicant is put on notice, I think she got lucky, because we were a little, uh, unlogical, a little under the curvis, exactly what happened there over the last few months, but in the future, I think it's for, that this board have all the proper information, you know what, it had to be the councilman, and we've done a little research, but at this point, we don't have that information. I have to, any comments? Any comments? Okay. Uh, Mr. Attorney, uh, yeah, I would like to talk, so. Mr. Attorney, I'll leave it at that, some thoughts? Yeah, I would give you, my intention first, back, we've had a lot of discussion about your premises, and this license, and some of the issues, concerns that are happening here, you know, in the past, and for us, so please keep the warnings that we've given you tonight, and take every step that you can to ensure, you know, that you're safe, that you're going with issues and concerns, but again, if this license does come up before us, again, you don't want any charges. You know, you are ultimately responsible, you're the license holders, and if you need to really understand, and, you know, go over the regulations, the ABC regulations, so. So, this was tonight, and it's, these restrictions are with it, please bear that in mind, okay? So, Secretary, what? Councilman, break, say.
Yes, Chief.
Councilman, Wester?
Aye.
Councilman, Kino?
Aye.
Councilman, Massa?
Aye.
Councilman, Massa?
Aye.
Councilman, President, what's up?
Aye, five minutes.